Now, we will call to order the legislative meeting of Chillicothe City Council. Rule call, Mr. Kirk?
Ames.
Here.
Bonner.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Neal.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Croll.
Here.
Showman.
Here.
Tatchell.
Here.
Okay, I'd like to invite everybody to rise to the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, you've got your journal minutes, both hard copy delivered by our clerk and electronically delivered by our clerk. Were they to -- Mr. Bonner?
I'm making motions to accept them, ma'am.
Yeah, accepted by Ms. Gray. Rule call to accept it to the journal minutes. Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Croll.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Tatchell.
Yes.
Good, the minutes are approved. Reports of committees? Mr. Croll?
Safety Service Committee has one item on tonight's agenda, item number six, which is at first reading, is to accept and appropriate $1,695 in grant funds awarded to the fire department as a training reimbursement grant from the Ohio Department of Commerce. Seeing as this is accepting money and as a reimbursement, I'm going to ask at the appropriate time that we please waive the three-read rule and accept this money tonight. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Croll. Any other reports of committees? Ms. Ames?
Thank you, President Reinhart. Development has one item on the agenda tonight. Item number one is the second reading of the resolution authorizing the filing of applications to participate in the Small Cities CBVG Allocation Program for fiscal year 2014. This is something that we do annually. We had the first reading in May, the second reading is now. There was a public hearing. The first public hearing was on Tuesday, May 27th. The second public hearing for the proposed project completion of the Washington Street paving is going to be this coming June 11th at 11:00 a.m. in the city conference room. And the deadline to get this in is June 20th. So, at the appropriate time, I'm going to ask to waive the three-read rule and pass this tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Ames. Any other reports of committees? Ms. Gray?
Thank you, President Reinhart. The Human Resources Committee has two items on tonight's agenda. Item number four, which is to appropriate $5,000 to temp the service secretary position. And item number five, the reading on the -- to appropriate $5,000 to federal expenses incurred by the Civil Service Commission to administer the police officer or sergeant exams. Item number four and number five, I will ask to waive the three-read rule in order to get these appropriate as soon as possible.
Thank you. Thank you, President. Any other reports of committees? Mr. Bonner?
Thank you, President Reinhart. The Parks and Rec Committee has two items on the agenda tonight. Item number two, which is endorse the first two years of Parks and Recreation Department Five-Year Plan. And number three, the appropriate $267,500 to fund one year of Parks and Recreation Department Five-Year Plan. At this time, as we all just went through the review session, I'll make a motion to table item number two.
You'd have to second by Ms. Gray. Rule call to table item two. Tatchell.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Croll.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Okay, item two is tabled.
Thank you, President Reinhart. And at this time, I'd like to make a motion to amend item number three, which would be appropriations. And that is to eliminate section seven and nine completely, which will eliminate $14,000, which will take the total to 253,500.
You get that, Joe?
Yes, and that means that there will be a renumbering of sections in light of the revision of section nine.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
And the change to 253,500 will be in the title.
All right. Do you want to go through and make eight steps or you've got to say that or?
Yeah.
All right.
Again, I have a second to amend by the noted changes accepted by Ms. Gray. Rule call on the amendment? Tatchell.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Croll.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
So, that ordinance will be amended and per me of the chair, that is not a significant change. It is not a change in the legislation and that will remain at second read.
And at the appropriate time, I ask to waive the three-read rule as although the astrological summer was not technically started, we certainly have started the traditional summer. And we'd like to get all these going, especially the mine, which is still that the pool is dependent upon. Also, I'd like to add that the Parks and Rec Board had a meeting last month, a lot of good information, talked about, you know, the different plans. And two things that came out specifically that I have requested a legal opinion on. One was the -- who determines, what does the process determine who, what vendors can sell in our city parks? Because I don't think there's anything in stone right now that's something that we need to look at. Secondly, I asked for an opinion, who is responsible for infatibles if they bring them into the park as part of their leasing the shelter? So, if you lease a shelter, you bring an infatible in, who is responsible? So, I'm going to wait for those two opinions from the law director. And when I get them, I have a report back to the Rep. Board and Council. At that time, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Bonner. Any other reports of committees? Mr. Tatchell?
Thank you, President Reinhart. The Parks and Rec -- I don't like to -- the Finance Committee has been on May 22nd and resulted there being was the assignment 1457, discuss the bed tax, not busted by Council for the pedestrian business bill. They requested that 33% of bed tax be given to the pedestrian business bill. If the discussion committee decided that the bed tax did not be given to them, however, Council expressed this issue after 2,315,000. Therefore, assignment 1457 will be taken out of the committee. Assignment 1423, the $5 license fee. This fee could be charged for voters without going to vote. It was discussed that there could be a possibility of four or $5 fees costing an increase of $20 per license. This would raise approximately $400,000 a year. City engineer Tom Day advised this would take possibly $1.4 million per year to maintain our streets. If Council decided to pass this legislation, the amount raised will only be one-third of the funds needed to keep up the maintenance of our streets. The Finance Committee decided assignment 1423, $20 license fee, assignment out of committee. Assignment 1464, $85,000 from unappropriated state highway funds. These funds have already been transferred. No additional legislation is needed. This information was supplied to me by the Law Director's office and the City Yard. Committee decided to take assignment 1464 out of committee. Assignment 1427 is a request to increase our city income tax from 1.6 to 1.8% to be used exclusively for maintenance and repair of our city streets, state highways not included. Round 50, 104, 23. Funds raised with the approval of the voters will raise the neighborhood of $1.4 million per year. This legislation, if approved, must be submitted to the Board of Elections by October, by August the 6th, so that it can appear on the November 4th ballot. The Finance Committee decided to move forward. Legislation is now in the hands of the Law Director. I consider this as regular legislation, not emergency legislation. I have also requested a review session next week, June 16th, in council chambers at 6:30. If legislation is prepared by them, the first reading may happen then, depending on whether or not the Law Director's office decides to do it. As more items.
Thank you, Mr. Tatchell. Any other reports of committees? Mr. Showman?
Community Affairs Committee has one item on tonight's agenda, item number seven, first reading, resolution to authorize Chillicothe Municipal Court to apply for the Edward Blair Memorial Adjunctive Assistance Grant to purchase Marx radios and metal detectors. At the appropriate time, I request to waive the three-read rule as the green government is tomorrow, June 10th.
Did I have it, Mr. Showman? Yes. And I want to thank Mr. Showman for getting that to the Law Director's office. Thanks, Sherry, Office of Theresa, for preparing that. And just sort of a side note, we did not receive that request for legislation from Judge Eddie until last Wednesday. So, there was some quick haste and I think it's a perfect example of if things have to be expedited for trying to get grant funds in, you know, we'll try to get the monies in as quick as we can. But I want to thank Mr. Showman and thank the Law Director's office for the quick turnaround on that as well as the $5,000 for the Civil Service Commission. We did not receive that request from the Auditor's office until last Tuesday. So, Ms. Gray, I want to thank your committee for getting that in and through quickly as well. Any other reports of committees? Ms. Patrick?
I just wanted to announce the Utility Affairs Committee has one assignment outstanding as number 1405, and it's the updating of the Senior Youth Ordinance. It is still with Utilities Director, hopefully will have it by the end of March. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick. Any other reports of committees? Reports of officials? Mayor Yuricson?
Thank you, President Reinhart. A lot of issues in the news recently about the Korean War Monument. We have had a meeting with Ms. Kuschbach regarding her concerns with the memorial. Seems there's three issues there. Councilman Croll was part of that meeting. Three issues are the images, the incorrect images on the face of the memorial, the number of names on the memorial, and funding for any operations for that memorial. There is going to be a meeting on Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Elks for anybody interested in attending that. That will be the Ross County Veterans Commission and Ms. Kuschbach and First Porters. I think that we've gotten some headway in the funding end of it with certain monument companies in Columbus that are willing to take care of anything that we need to put on there for free. This has the support of the Ross County Veterans Commission. So, I think we're clear to go ahead and get an accurate and all-inclusive memorial replaced in the city park that's been designated for the memorials. So, that's good news. Secondly, on March, I'm sorry, on May 30th, we made our application to the Jobs and Family Services for the Roscoe Contract Renewal. Roscoe is an annual contract that comes to maturity on June 30th and kicks in on the new contract on July 1st. Like last year, we have applied for the three-county territory. That's about $2.1 million in revenue and that being a zero balance and item that cannot maintain a profit. So, it does cover a variety of costs and things that Transit will get on that. Earlier in May, we had a meeting with the people that due to coordination for that program in Ohio, or at South Central Ohio, Jobs and Family Services, just to get an update on how we were doing. And they were overwhelmingly satisfied with the service that we provided over the last year. So, we'll see how the award comes out by the end of June and hopefully we'll continue with that program going into 2015. Notice the car allow cleanup started this morning. The tentative plans is made by Mike Chessler to this, to the development group. Is cleanup is the first stage to get a clear building. Restabilization of the building is the second phase. That'll take approximately four months. And then the balance of the 15 months will be the restoration project itself. Scalpelings due to go up on June 23rd. They've already got the sidewalks roped off. We've added a couple parking places out on Main Street and Payne Street for positioning of dumpsters, which now I notice are behind the rent fence. But work continues on that and we look for a steady project going forward. Pilot Station also has started underway, the excavation, the demolition of the basic building, and excavation of that site has begun. That's due to be a four-month project and should be opening in September, October timeframe. And then last, the Operation Stand Up, Phase Three, the initial point of implementation of that program, spend the presidential streets on the east end. Phase Three is kicking into place now. What that is, is a neighborhood watch program, city services going in and taking care of anything that are on city rideaways or public streets that need to be repaired or upgraded. We're going with the broken windows theory. And there will be a meeting that will be hosted by Chief Orr and Bud Lidle on June 28th at 6:00 p.m. at the Transit Conference Room. And that will involve members of that community. The location may change based upon response and attendance, but for now, that's the plans. Phase One is already underway, is three weeks underway at an underclosed location in the city as we continue to move along with that program. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor Yuricson. Honored Duffie?
Thank you. I'll touch first on a couple of the agenda items tonight. First off, I'd like to express my support for item number three, which is the, as amended, the Parks and Rec capital appropriation. As I mentioned in the earlier meeting, my main area of interest here is the repairs to the pool. Those are the most urgent funds needed. And I know that as the ordinance stands, as amended, we remove some of the appropriations that people might have had some concerns about. So, in order to continue with those repairs, I would support passage tonight of item three. I'd also like to touch on item four, which was, this is a council committee assignment that I made, as you heard last Tuesday. This is essentially a stopgap. As we all know, this, we budgeted for an average of 20 hours a week for this position. That wasn't changed until approximately early April. That had an effect, a twofold effect really. Operating under the ordinance as it was in existence caused a full-time salary we paid out in addition to benefits as required by that ordinance. So, we actually burned through that money at a rate a little bit faster than two times what we would have anyway. Commissioner McLaughlin has forwarded to the mayor and myself a request, I believe for a committee assignment, to get through the balance of the year. But before that, I don't believe it's been turned into a committee assignment yet, but in the meantime, we need to make sure that that position is funded, frankly, to keep the office moving. As Commissioner McLaughlin noted earlier at the earlier meeting, I believe it was a busier year than anticipated and frankly, the commission's hands were tied for an extent of the year. How the remainder of the year finishes really isn't of my concern and is not of the concern of this request. I think that this, as long as there's a committee assignment soon, this amount of money will get us through probably a committee meeting on the topic of how to finish out the year and two or three reads at council. So, I would ask for your support of passage of item number four tonight. And before I move on, I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any other topic. I think I saw Councilwoman Neal first.
I don't have my notes with me, but I know we had a meeting. We knew exactly how much money we had. And at that time, after much discussion and debate, we decided that this was going to be a part-time position. And we had a certain amount of money allocated for that. And we all agreed on that. So, now we're here with the request for $5,000. And my question is, I guess I have two questions. Why we didn't stick to our plan is number one, what happened, but that fell through. And number two is if we vote against this, what will happen?
Okay, so the question, the answer, the question number one, just so everybody could hear, I believe, was essentially why did the position stay full-time for a portion of this year when it was budgeted for part-time? Is that?
That's right.
The summary?
Yeah.
So, from the perspective of the Auditor's office, we just had to follow the letter of the law, which at the time, for the first three months of the year, the job existed in city ordinances. It was full-time and got benefits. And so, we just followed that law. The timesheets were submitted. We frankly didn't have the legal option to not provide help with that sort of thing. I believe that at some point, early spring, late winter, or it could have been early winter, I'm not sure, there was a committee assignment request to actually change the job description. And in order, in order for that to have, it just needed to happen earlier. So, that's why we weren't paying the position at part-time earlier. The, can I answer your question? Frankly, we don't. Our office didn't have the ability to not do, not, to pay anything other than full-time and benefits.
Why was there such a gap of time though between our meeting where we decided?
Are you talking about the budget meeting last year?
No, I'm talking about the H, I think it was an HR meeting where, and I don't have the date on that.
You're talking about after the passage of the new ordinance?
So, what you're talking about? Right.
Mrs. Patrick and I went through the timeline this afternoon and I did, because I was elsewhere, I wasn't able to write that down. So, Patrick, can you have that time on the front?
Yeah, the first reading on that board is changing for the part-time was February 24th. If we passed it March 24th, it was emergency language. It should have gone into effect right then and there. So, I don't understand why it didn't. But that's regardless, it was known from the get-go back in November that it was a part-time position.
Right.
And, you know, it should have been just funded as part-time.
Right.
It was funded as part-time. The person in that position should have just worked part-time.
Right.
And who's the supervisor and who keeps track of the time? Is she just an employee? This is the same problem we had with the treasurer's office.
It's an administrative function, not review of council. Well, I mean, can anyone just come in and make up their hours and are we just an ATM machine that we?
That's the way to do it.
Keep handing out money?
I can answer part of that question and then if I may, I give the floor to Commissioner McLaughlin, who's here. The ordinance as passed allocated at the time a balance of hours, which is what it would reflect going forward, which is 10:40.
Right.
Now, at the time, we knew when it was passed, you're through probably three months. We knew at that time, and I think I mentioned it probably in a public meeting, that something would have to change during the year or the remainder of the year would have to be something like 10 hours a week. Now, so, any, we have several positions in the city that are a budget, like a, it's just a flat amount of hours and it's up to the department. Municipal Court comes to mind, their bailiffs who are allocated 760 hours. One week they might work 30, one week they would 10. So, that, that in and of itself is not a problem.
Right.
But when you run out, it is. And I think if I can pass the floor, Commissioner McLaughlin.
Yeah, absolutely. To ask one more question?
Sure.
Is there any overtime involved in this?
I believe that there might have been one payroll this year where there was overtime. I think one that I can remember of. I think that there was one payroll where there were hours in excess of 80. I believe it was paid out as comp time, not payroll, or not overtime. Same difference in terms of hours.
So, are part-timers getting overtime?
I think there was one, but I.
I want to hear what happened. In December, I initiated actions for the waitress job before the 24th. I was advised that we couldn't do that because of the city ordinance. I said, a full-time job, you can't go. I said, well, let's pass an ordinance if we want to go to what we are doing. And the agreement was not 20-hour a week. The agreement was 140, 1,040 for a year to be managed after the discretion of permission. So, Luke was saying, I might need 30 hours one week and 10 one week, whatever level of work we're paying. And so, we were unable to reduce the hours until March 24th. By March 24th, 560,040 hours had already been expended, not because we necessarily wanted to, but because we, plus there were benefits paid on that that we didn't think would be paid because we thought it would be a part-time job without benefits. Now, let me tell you what happened between, on March 24th, that we could have therefore cut the job back to something even less than 24. But between January and March, there were one, two, three, let me tell you what happened. The city electrician, the inspector, decided to retire. The wastewater plant supervisor, the inspector, decided to retire. The utilities clerk decided to retire. And the police sergeant decided to retire a lot earlier than he thought. So, all of a sudden, we got requests for those eligible lists. Soon after that, when those positions were filled, we then needed multiple lists for the deputy clerk to backfill the job that Luke had because we had to fill his job over the campaign. So, within a very short period of time, we got six new requests for eligible lists for lists that didn't exist. And we had one of two options. If we cut the job to 10 hours or whatever on March 24th, those jobs still offered. Or we had to do what we needed to do to get those jobs filled and most of them are filled. So, we continued to have the job worked full-time for business-related reasons for another six weeks or so through the middle of the campaign. But by then, I thought we had 80-some-odd hours left of the 1,040. But the major, the major component of the time that had come, the 560 hours, was spent not because the commission wanted that job, it was working 40 hours with benefits, but because we were told until the ordinance changed. It took from January 3rd and the mayor submitted the request until March 24th to get past on the schedule. But during that period of time, we didn't have the option of cutting those hours back. And that being the case, once we ended up, we didn't have very much money. And the reality is, when Roger came to them and said, hey, we need a police sergeant test and a police officer test and it's going to cost this kind of money. We had initially thought there would be six or seven openings. So far, there have been many, many. I say to Roger, we can't fill your job. We don't have a budget to do that. We don't, we don't have that kind of money anymore. And so, he says, I can transfer money to you. So, that's what happened in the first half of the year, based on the projections we had and based on the unanticipated need to pay that job with benefits for three months on the benefit. It's how we got outside the contract. What we do for the rest of the year, we need to decide ultimately. Truth of the matter is, Mike Warren and I, it's not important to us how fast the city fills jobs. That's all our only mission is to get them filled as fast as we can. If we cut the position to five hours or three hours, that means it'll take a long time to get it filled. So, long as everybody understands that, we're okay with that. And if the, if a reasonable option would have been to say to Richard, you can't replace Wayne's guy, we don't have anybody to get that list together, and to say to Tom, that we can't fill that job quickly, even though the electricians want to leave, and to say to Roger, you can't have them as quick as you need them because we're going to cut that job back in the middle of April when all these things are happening. It was not the right business thing to do. And so, we didn't. We think we did the right thing to get as many jobs filled as possible in support of the cities driving. You can't imagine what happens when somebody announces they want to leave. We get these frantic phone calls, we've got to have a list. We get these frantic phone calls, and you've got to have a list that has it. And we respond as quickly as we can. But if we had not intended to allow that job, to get those lists together. Let me give you an example. When we posted the utility clerk, 300 people bid on the job. 300. That means you've got to get 300 applications in, and you've got to do a list of 300 people. We had originally planned to have a test at the Ross County Service Center. They can handle about 100 people. Turns out that we, when we got that many applicants in that time, I had to go to Dean Tuck, who's a good, he's the auditor at the university. He agreed. So 300 people have to get a letter that says, don't go to the service center, go to the, oh, you see. Exact same thing happened with the deputy clerk job. We thought we would have 100, we had the, so the, the Ross County Service Center reserved. All of a sudden, the number of applicants is three times, even for one job, we get 300 applicants. And so somebody has to do those letters, somebody has to do all that work. And there's no way to get that work done. And the, the right answer was not to say, we're not going to fill that job. Because the need to fill those jobs was greater than we thought. And so we did what we had to do to get it done. Now, I didn't realize it till now, that we were as tight on money as we are. And so I appreciate Luke saying, you've got to have us on that. But, and I'll try to say it with my voice, Chris, if we cut the budget completely, it's okay with us. Just being, we can't get any more eligible, we can't fill any more jobs. So all the things we do, we have to have resources for. And the only reason we did what we did is that the demand was extraordinarily high than we thought it would be. And we thought the right thing for us to do was to respond to that. With the understanding we could come back to the audit and say what happened, and expect, you know, some mutual understanding of the need to support the city's needs. So that's how we got to where we are. And that, where do we go from here? We need to decide that. There'll be a committee, I'm sure, and more projections, I'm sure, that we can look at. But like I said, initially, we thought we would have half a dozen jobs fulfilled this year. So far, we've filled three times that month. We thought we'd need four, five eligible lists. So far, we've done eight, and looks like we need five more. And how do you think those things happen? I probably worked 10 hours a week since I became chair, doing civil service work, because the two sources were not available. And when we didn't have a secretary, Mike and I did even more than that. And we can't keep doing that, we've got to have some level of resource in that to do it. And like I said, when the big crush came, and we needed all those jobs, we didn't know why, we didn't know they had a crush on us. We didn't know that for a utility clerk at the time. And so the need to fill those jobs was paramount and urgent. And the wrong thing to do was say, okay, it's going to take us twice as long to help you fill those jobs. And so we continued to put the resources there. That's how we got here. Like Luke said, we need some stuff that can give us long enough time to talk for the rest of the year. But the person will be the same. Our level of resource is directly proportional to how long it takes us to respond to the city's needs. Go back.
Who monitors the civil service tests?
Depends on the tech. Normally, they're unusual situations. Normally, the civil service secretary and others will monitor the tech. Now, because Nancy's hours were getting cut back, and she had an interest in two administrative jobs, the deputy court clerk job and the utility job. She asked us, could she take the test? Because she was being ready to get her in. Well, the only way to do that was that I decided to arrange for both of those tests. And Mike Warren monitored and administered the deputy court clerk test. And so him and Laurie, and several people from courts, actually administered the test and did it properly. I submitted the request to the testing agency, all that, and they did this for me. For the deputy court clerk job, not me, for the utility clerk job, I did it myself. And we had Joy Clummer and two or three other folks that came to monitor, to see what people were cheating. But I actually administered the test with me, to, here's what the rules are, here's what you do, and all that kind of thing. And submitted it and got the response back. That's an example of kind of extra work that might, we normally wouldn't have to do that. But we were trying our best to help the city, like they pay 100 dollars a year, but we're doing this. And we're doing our best to help the city through what seemed to be a big crunch. And so in those cases, but other than that, all the other tests, Nancy would monitor and more, with some assistance from what she did.
And do, do you and Mr. Warren enjoy whoever monitors or supervises us, because do they get paid in first fed?
No.
If she's not, if she's taking the test, do they get paid?
No, we don't get paid. We get paid $8.33 a month, and 83 cents of that goes to D. with 34 P R A. It's, it's a unique situation.
Right.
And so if she's facing getting out of the back, and she wants to take the test, we think it's reasonable for us to try to accommodate her by allowing her to do that, even though it means we have to do it. But other than that, normally, the civil service secretary would arrange the test. She would proper the test, she would collect all the applications, put together the original list of folks that should be taking the test, we could check it off when they come. And then once the eligible list, she would also do it.
Who monitors the civil service commissions budget?
Well, pretty much Nancy monitored, and I monitored from a distance. Maybe she'll be monitoring it in the future going forward. But let me say this, I was in industry all of my life, and there is nobody that can stick to a budget better than me. But there, in my whole career, nobody ever said to me, you can't control your costs for the first, for three months of a budget with me. And you also can't control your workload, but you've got to stay with it. But it was impossible to do, and so we couldn't do it. But going forward, we can do it, we could have done it this time. And if, if, let's take an example. We tell you that if we're projecting for the rest of the year, we'll need three eligible lists, and so we need this much money to do that. And you give us that budget, and it turns out that we get requests for seven or eight. But if the processes come back and say, if we need that much, we need some more resources, or do we decide just not to fill some jobs? Is a dilemma that we find out. And when we found out, says, and at this time, the determination of, especially for big retail, that has not, meets not, to do one is an important job. And the thing, we got one city, you know, chief electrician guy, and he's got the license, we've got to go fill that job. We cannot not fill that job. It's not like reducing the fire department from 30 firefighters to 29, it's talking about quicker down. And so we thought we need to fill it.
I don't think anyone here is in the worst of that fellow positions or looking forward to have this week we need. I think the, the question here is, if, if these hours are presented to us, where is the validation that these hours were actually worked? That they're, if, if she was overseeing her own hours, then, then we need some kind of, a little bit more of a accountability as far as to what hours, especially when we're hearing overtime. If we, accountability on hours is something that I think we are tasked with.
In that case, she proctored, like, she proctored the exam in the evening. And I guess, in the past, I assumed that if you proctored tests, so she takes four hours to, and what that means, you've got to go observe the test to get them in the evening, like I said. And so I guess she had the option of coming in at one o'clock that day or later and working until the evening. And she didn't, she worked her normal shift and then worked until the evening, that four hours, thought that to be. And I assumed that to be, she assumed that was fact, because I don't know. But that's how that happened. And if I had have been looking for compensation for when I proctored tests, and I've done two so far, because we did the firefighter lieutenant and captain, because we didn't have a secretary. So Mike and I did that, and Barbara Tillingham said during the day. And then, but if I was proctoring the test in the evening, and wanted the fellow to work in the wall, because she's not exempt as she is, she would get paid overtime for that by statute, unless she would rearrange her schedule within that day. But she, when she was working 40 hours, it's because we told her to. And for the first three months, like I said, we didn't have an option, not to. Then after that, of course, and then we got a need for five or six eligible lists, you know, the only thing I showed you really, that we do, we got posted jobs, yada, 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 and we got 300, 600, I think it was 570 applications for two jobs. Or two we posted here. Do you remember all those coming up to one place? You got organizing, you got, you know, roster list, all of that. Like I said, then you got to do six, up, three, 570 letters, so they have to move locations and all that. We can do all that work. And so we told Nancy to do it.
Mr. LaForte, I don't think the council is necessarily, we understand, because a lot of work involved with the process.
Yes.
I think our concern is that, given where the civil service commission was at the end of fiscal year 2013, coming into fiscal year 2014, and a precarious position that commission is in with regard to its budget, I think that our concern is that monitoring should have been taking place long before last week, when the request came forward with respect to the $5,000 additional that would be needed to cover payroll. That this is something that should not have come to us a few days, expecting us to be able to pass that legislation, to be able to cover that cost of expense. But this should have been done and monitored long before now, irrespective of whatever process has been put into place. And I think that's where council has the issue this evening, that we don't have any doubt whatsoever with regard to the amount of work that's involved. We do want to make sure we move forward and making sure that jobs, positions are filled. It's the process by which we need to go through and make this happen. That if any other department came to us a few ways with regard to making this request, the budget has to be monitored. It's not anything that we can profusely say, we want to have this money, we're not going to make payroll. We have to be able to follow that process that's in place for the reason, to save them with respect to the budget.
And I can take as much as blame on that issue for a couple of reasons. One is, the way we pay our health insurance, it's paid a month behind. So essentially, we paid a month, or a month ahead. So essentially, we paid a month of health insurance for a month that it'll be reimbursed to us, essentially, which accelerated, when you get down to 20 hours a week, that, that monthly health, that drastically reduced. And that, that was as much the impetus for my quick request as anything. But it, once we got down to 20 hours, which I believe started two weeks ago or something, that, that helped the process great. But the, the health insurance, as much as anything else, just made it very difficult. And it, and for, for many departments, that's, we do, we do a lot of the, excuse me, as much of the monitoring as, as the department does. So I'll take equal blame, certainly.
Yeah, quickly, because I think this ties into questions that we had previously. Part-time person receiving full-time benefits. Is that?
That, so the current case is that she's a part-time, the physician is a part-time physician, receiving no health benefits. Previously, it was a full-time position, receiving health benefits. There are a few physicians in the city that are part-time with benefits, but not many.
When that started, April? When did that start?
Pardon me?
When did she stop having benefits?
When, when did it stop? I believe that the last month was April, but then I believe that we paid for May, which would, or... But we paid for May and June, something, something along those lines.
Since we passed the legislation on March 21st or 24th, wouldn't the benefits have stopped at the end of March?
Wouldn't the health insurance have stopped? I'm not sure. I'd, I'd really have to double check it through the timeline, but I, I know that, I know that the acceleration was greater. It was, it was because of the health insurance laws going in, I know we had to pay one extra month more than was actually insured. So I could be off on my months by a month. But I know that we essentially had to pay for one more than we actually, than the individual was insured for. If that makes sense.
Well, yeah, my concern is you've got unemployment, no one's monitoring it, she's saying how much she's working. And that didn't work out when we had that happening in the treasurer's office.
In my whole business, where I monitor work, I would put a place on my table. Lord knows, I don't believe anybody could do all the work that we've done in that time, and that we've done. And that's what I believe. And if I thought we could have, then we would.
This might help. I'll answer Beth's second question, which was, what happens if we don't appropriate the money? If we don't appropriate the money, I'll give notice to the commission, we're out of money. And the commission, I believe, would have to terminate that individual at that time. At which time, I would come back to council and ask for an appropriation to pay for the impending unemployment benefits. So at, at, to a certain extent, I will be asking for money, whether it's stopgap or unemployment, for something.
There are lies are the one. Inasmuch that, has the budget been monitored on both sides, not necessarily just?
Well, and, and had it been passed earlier, you can't, you can't eliminate that.
But let me, let me say again, if we could have cut that job to 20 hours, my voice would tremble again, on January 1st, we would have. We wouldn't have the problem. Now, what we might have had, if we had have been working 20 hours a week, we would have delayed filling some of the job. But I wrote a letter to Nancy saying, you're going to 20 hours a week on the first of January. And somebody says, you can't do that. And I said, well, that's what, they agreed with it, we can't do that. And if we had been able to do what we planned to do, we wouldn't have a problem now. And to the extent that we have a budget problem, it's because we spent 60% of the money we didn't want to. And we wanted to work 20 hours a week without benefits like we had agreed, that's what we talked about. We said two things, work 20, work an average of 20 hours a week and no benefits. And somebody actually, of course, to the certificate, they didn't do a benefit, we said, no. That's what, that's what the deal was, in committee. And we were ready to do that on January 1st, until we found out that the ordinance hadn't been changed. And so that's why, that's why we got into the fix. And like I said, by the time we were able, or had the option, and I thought even then, and I even think now, if, as opposed to we had to work some additional high number of hours during high periods, that gives us the option of working almost no hours for the rest of the year. Work the lady her off and ask for vacation in the summer. But it's an extraordinary period that we came to. We're not here because we want to be, we're not here because we are irresponsible. We're here because the circumstances dictate that we are. And the other thing that we were doing was in support of fulfilling the positions in a timely manner, which is what we got.
You know, I think something that complicates this a little bit further is the civil service departments are a rarity in itself, outside of any normal other department in the city. The civil service does not report to the mayor and say, check and balance for administration. The mayor appoints the commissioners, commissioners appoint the civil service secretary. But because commissioners have real jobs outside of that, and are not on-site, and this person doesn't report to me, they go relatively unsupervised. And there's questions about, you know, efficiencies and time management and whatnot, especially when I get called down to the auditor's office saying that there's overtime involved. And I, I think we just need a better system, so accountability can be put into place, and not leave that at the feet of the commissioners. Right now, there's not, Luke and I have been talking about this, if it's a part-time role or whatever, can that be planted with another job? I tried to do that last year, didn't work out so well, but there would have been accountability there in supervision. But I, I think that, that job needs to be supervised. Because on paper, it just doesn't look like a 40-hour-a-week job. So maybe we talk and, and make the presentation to council, just try and get some accountability built into this process and take it from there.
So in closing, on item four.
You gave a long report.
I think it's a long, I don't think Bill Morsy ever had one that's long.
I might have exceeded my time there. As was Ms. LaForte's point. This is my notice to council that this position is out of money. I don't have a personal stake in it, but, but to the extent that council would like to see this position continue for a period of time until it's determined what happens for the remainder of the year, I would support passage of item number four tonight. Okay. We are almost done with the audit. Information for council and the administration on a post-audit meeting will be coming soon. Anticipate that within the next couple of weeks. We will, well, I'll bring it up now and probably notify council of the decision next week, but next meeting. EMS revenue is pretty far behind anywhere where we had all hoped or anticipated. There were some internal problems. They had to go to pen and paper for a period of months. But to the extent that they're behind, even with our billing, I wouldn't anticipate us catching up to where we're projected. So we're going to have a pretty significant decrease in that revenue estimate. We haven't done the receiving warrant for May's billing yet. Once that comes through, which will be forward the next meeting, I'll make the final decision. But last year, I think we waited a little bit too long, I waited a little bit too long, to reduce that revenue projection from EMS. We kept hearing, it'll pick up at the beginning of the year, or at the end of the year, that sort of thing. This year, I'm going to err on the side of reducing it early. And if we get good news at the end of the year, fine. But we'll anticipate that conversation. But we'll anticipate that conversation, and a similar conversation on some of the court Lastly, Councilwoman Patrick might, might have been bringing this up, but our wastewater superintendent, Wayne Greig, has been retired here recently. I just want to acknowledge his retirement. He's a great, great servant to the city, was here for a long time, very thorough gentleman, and I appreciated having the chance to work with him. I learned a lot from him, and he will, he will be missed by the city, so I just wanted to recognize him on the record. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Attorney Feeney. A report from the chair. Actually, the only thing I'd like to comment is actually what Luke just said about the retirement of Wayne. I've known Wayne for many years. I can remember my rookie year at council, we did a big, it was almost like a field trip down to the sewer plant, and it was quite impressive, if nobody's ever got that tour, to watch them turn what we flushed down the toilet into more than the water that's cleaner than our drinking water. It's quite amazing to see how that process works. But Wayne's been a much dedicated public servant. He, he's got a skill set second to none, and I don't know if we're going to miss him, but we're going to have a, you know, we've got our hands full trying to find somebody with his experience, credentials, and all of those things. Again, I'd like to wish Wayne well and thank him for his many, many, many years of service to the community of Chillicothe and actually helping our water system be safe. Next up on the meeting is audience participation. Remember, step up to the microphone, give your name and address. Councilroom 21 limits the speaker to five minutes, and each subject to 15 minutes.
My name is Mary Curran. I live at 252 South Page Street. And I would like to speak about our problem with dogs. On the 27th of March, we went to Waverly to watch an end of a school year for our granddaughter. When we left, our kitties were on the porch where they've lived for eight years, no harm or anything. When we come back, they had been killed, totally destroyed by dogs in our neighborhood at the back. One of those dogs was a pit bull. This is not a new problem. It happens in all over the city anymore. What is a problem is it doesn't get anything done to stop it. I don't, I know some people think cats are nothing, but they are wonderful pets, and they are just as good a pet as a dog. And they mean just as much to the family as a child. The police officer that came and talked to me, I am of the opinion he knew very damn little, to be honest with you. From listening to him, he cared less, and he knew very little. When I said to him, what if it hadn't been my two cats? What if it had been a child, this dog attacked and tore up? He told me to quit living in a fantasy world. This is not a fantasy world today. This is a regular world, and it's very easy for these types of dogs to kill children, kill adults. Columbus has found that out, and they are taking advantage of it. And so should the city of Chillicothe, because in my hand is an animal ordinance for the city of Chillicothe. The thing is, it's not getting obeyed, and it's not getting taken care of. Any dog, a vicious dog is considered, any dog that when unprovoked inflicts, bites, or attacks a human being on domestic, or domestic animal, either on public or private property, or in a vicious or terrorizing manner approaches any person in apparent attitude of attack on the street sidewalks or any public grounds or places, or any dog with a known propensity, tendency, or disposition to attack unprovoked or cause injury to otherwise endanger the safety of human beings or domestic animals should be taken care of. It shall be unlawful for any person possessing, owning, or otherwise having under his custody, or control any domestic animal or fowl or any kind of any kind to permit the same to run at large or upon any of the streets, the public places, or upon the land of the person or the city. Limitations of particular breeds. Now here comes your breeds. Many different terriers, many different bull terriers, or the American pit bull terrier that destroyed on my property. The owner shall show proof of liability insurance, of a liability insurance policy exhibiting no less than $100,000 coverage for any incident involving a dog. A penalty violation for breeding are limitations. No dog, as outlined in section 522 above, shall be permitted to be licensed hereunder. None of these dogs have license, have a fence to keep them fenced in, do not have shots, do not have anything. No, no given time to this police officer even try to get these dogs, take them to the pound where they are supposed to be taken, put into quarantine for 10 days, so that they can be checked out to make sure they do not have rabies. None of this is done by the city of Chillicothe because it just lets things slide under the rug and moves on. And I think it's time that if our police department, our sheriff department, if you cannot handle these dogs, then I suggest you bring in somebody that can handle them for you. Do it properly. If it costs you money, that's better than you robbing Peter to pay Paul to take care of your bills that you don't take care of anyway. And I think it is time it got started now, not until a child is killed or an adult is badly hurt. Because then the city is going to be sued, and then you're going to have to wonder where in the name of God are you going to get the money to cover these bills? And it will happen. I want you to know that four days after the policeman stood on my porch, my husband called the police department again, because here were the two dogs on my front porch. When he was calling the police, they were headed for, over on the next street. Did the police do anything about it? No. These dogs live right over on Mechanic Street, not very far from here, and definitely in the, almost in my backyard. I say it's time you did something that is important to the people in this city. I'm sure none of you want to lose a child, want to have an adult have to go through such an experience in a hospital. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Curran. Any other members wish to...
I'm Harrison Myers, 301 Carroll Drive.
I'm sorry, could you say that louder? The air conditioner's blocking my ear.
I'm Harrison Myers, 301 Carroll Drive.
Thank you.
I am Harrison Myers, representing the community around Tiffin Elementary, for a concern about the disrepair of the alley south of Tiffin. This alley's condition has been going downhill for numbers of years. When Mr. Fiveharren School started last year, he contacted the city about re-circusying or repairing this alley. He was told there was no money to spend on repairing this alley. This road is used not only by about 40 childrens down each day, but by numerous neighbors who use it to access their home from Bridge Street. Many parents use this alley after picking up or dropping off students at school. This is Penhouse 6th grade science student did a pot hole mapping project on, on the first half of the alley. Then the 5th grade student went out to view the alley, then the 5th grade student... Sorry.
Thank you, Tom.
Then at the Tiffin family fun night, 5th and 6th grade students circulated petitions and in less than an hour and a half, had about 160 signatures urging counsel to consider working on the alley. We are concerned about the safety of students moving through this area as drivers try to miss pot holes. Damaged two cars is also a concern. City workers did place some material in the pot hole the last week of May, but it, but it is already clean. I would now like to review my letter I wrote for school to the district. Quality of the alley south of Tiffin Elementary is terrible and has been for years. This problem for the safety of parents, students, and the people of Chillicothe. Taxpayers of the city give me money to run the government, pay people, and keep up our roads. This said alley has many pot holes and tire marks. Because of this, people who use the alley have to drive on private property or on sidewalks of the local school, just so they don't break their car. This alley is so, is also at its safety hazard. Every day, students must use this alley to get home or get to school. There is no, there is a person that is driving their car down the alley and, and paying attention to the pot holes instead of looking in front of them. Also, people are driving on the sidewalks, they could also easily run over somebody or something. Also, buses use this alley to pick kids up from school. It's a big bus school of a whole bunch of kids, and that can easily destroy them. Would you please fix this alley if the people sort of want to be in Ohio? Thank you.
Thank you. Very well spoken.
Harrison, you want to show me that?
Absolutely. And all that work on it.
I would suggest the city engineer pull back a little bit. But, they did it on a scale of 25 centimeters, or, wait, a centimeter equals about a foot or so. And as you can see there are a fair number of pot holes. Some of them also did a nice job of measuring the depth of the pot holes, but he was a little rushed, he didn't get all the figures, but thank you, Beth.
Very good. I hope they got good grades. Absolutely. I'm recommending you guys get an A. I don't want to put her on the spot or anything.
It's our inbox.
That was awesome. And you wear that tie well, young man. Very, very professional. Alan Ford here.
It'll be a tough act to follow, huh?
Yep. And, and I don't pretend that I'm going to follow it, or even say all the things that I initially thought of talking about, but people probably know that, oh, Alan Davis, 370 Graywood Drive, Chillicothe, Ohio. You know, city streets has been an issue that I've tried to champion over the last few months, tried to do some of my own background work and stuff like that. So, it was good to hear that there's going to be a meeting next week. I intend to try to attend that.
6:30.
Yeah, 6:30. And, and I look forward to, you know, a good discussion on it. My overwhelming concern is, and again, from my background, it was healthcare finance, CPA, masters in accounting, and my whole career was financial planning and strategic planning and stuff like that. So my concern all along has been, if we don't have a good study or good plan behind it, how do we know that we're, the levy that's being proposed, or the dollars that are being talked about are the appropriate amount? The comments in the, in the finance committee meeting, in the paper, you know, there was an article on May 23rd about that 22nd finance committee meeting. We had, numbers ranged from 100,000 a year for streets, up to a million and a half from the engineer's office. I wasn't there, so I don't know, you know, what back, what supporting documentation was for those numbers. But the process of coming up with a number, at least a ballpark number, is not real hard once you identify the different components that you have to address. So I hope that as we go and we talk about that levy, that people will bring some kind of supporting documentation, so that the council can determine, is that levy even adequate? My gut, from what I've done in the past on this, is no, it's not, because we have a huge backlog, and how long will, will it take to do that backlog? Plus, we have ongoing maintenance every year that has to be done. And I think from the engineer's department, though I can't speak for him, because, you know, he knows what caused, what, where he gets his numbers from, but he talked about at least a million and a half a year, knowing that that probably was not enough to address the backlog and do current maintenance that needs to be done. So until we really come up with a good number of, what's the amount of the backlog? How long do we think it's acceptable to, for that backlog to take to be worked down? And how much are we able to do each year? And then the point that is real important, because the city street study, that did not include alleys. My wife and I just drove on an alley across from, picture this, it was in the parking lot. Is it just officially blocked off? Huge holes in it? Just get back to the parking lot. So our alleys are in worse shape than our streets, and some of our streets are in bad shape. So my, my concern is not to beat up on why they're in such trouble, but let's make sure that we've got a good number, so that if we go and we do a levy, or whatever the plan is, maybe it's a combination of a levy, the license plate fees, and some bet, you know, I, I don't know what the right plan is, but if we don't have a, a good plan on, a good number of what the crisis is, then we can't put together the components for how to finance it. So hopefully at that meeting, the engineering department will come through and, and have some justification for their million and a half, or what their real number is for the take to do that. So just don't jump to the number, and that, my fear in talking with Chairman of the Engineering Department, and he's been pushing forward, so he's been talking about it and pushing for, you know, that sizable number, but my, my fear is, he came up with that number without a plan behind it, and then it'll get passed, and you'll find out the situation afterward. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Curran. And I'll thank you for the cheering streets. Any other members of the audience wish to speak with counsel? Moving forward. Old business. Do any council members have any old business?
I think we gave it here right. Did you say the stand, stand-up meeting was June 28?
Yeah, that's what I read there.
Let's play, here's the sound.
That's 26th, I'm sorry.
26th, okay.
Get it off there. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Mr. Curran. Thank you very much. Any other old business? Moving forward, petitions in correspondence, Mr. Burke.
Mr. President, I have received a letter from the Ohio EPA. This is in reference to another public notice they issued regarding the National Pollute and Discharge Elimination System, and I provided copies of that notice to the members of the council. This is also, of course, being published for the general public. Secondly, I received a notice from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control of the transfer of permit from the... of the transfer of permit from Bijou Associates LLC doing business as the Thirsty Fox of thirty-one South Pink Street, first floor, to Steiners Speakeasy LLC of the same location. Another notice from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control of the transfer of permits from Walgreen Company, DBA Walgreens, zero six six eight two, Princeton Glendale Road in West Chester, Ohio, to Walgreen Company, DBA Walgreens, eleven two ninety-four of ten seventy Western Avenue. And lastly, I've received a lengthy letter, seven pages, I believe it is, from the Alliance Defending Freedom. Mr. Brett Harvey, senior counsel, and David Cortman, senior counsel, alerting council to the change as a result of a recent U.S. Supreme Court decision that now permits and protects the rights of persons who wish to give prayer prior to city council meetings and offering their assistance to any municipality that requires assistance in complying with the law and understanding what the legal rights of the public body is. And that's all I have, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. New business, any council members have any new business? Mr. Bonner.
Well, thank you, President. First of all, this, next thing, Mr. Corrigan, how sorry I'm here about the cats. I know how dear of heaven it'd be to a family. That is, that is a tough loss and hopefully we'll make better improvement on some of this dog issue because a cat did save a kid's life the other day. That's a big YouTube thing, dogs attacking a kid and the cat got it. So, well, not to make light, but I'm, I'm very sorry for your loss. I'm sorry to hear about that.
Well, at least it wasn't a chart.
That's, that's, that's.
And with them roaming these streets all over the city, it can be a chart the next time.
Or me, or someone else, but, but I'm very sorry. And then on a much lighter note, I have to say, because I know she will watch this at some time, she will never miss this, happy anniversary to my wife today. And thank her for putting up with me for thirty years.
I'll make a second. How many years ago?
Thirty years. People have committed heinous crimes about that time.
And I want to look at the camera and say, Katrina, how did you do that? You're a saint. That is a light, I'm saying, Bill, for zero, no, that is awesome. Um, Mrs. Ames?
Thank you, President, I have three short items. I had asked President Reinhardt for a review session prior to Mr. Trutzel's review session next week at five thirty, and I would like to withdraw that request.
Yeah, I have not sent out a public notice yet, so that's, that's fine.
No review session for me at five thirty. Second thing, just a real quick update on the pool. Mr. Tanner, I talked to him today and he's anticipating getting the pool open at the end of the week, that's not for sure thing. But I did want to say that a lot of people have seen this. Ronald McDonald was supposed to have the event at the pool this Wednesday and that has been rescheduled instead of the eleven, it's going to be the seventeen. So if anybody asks you about that, it's going to be at the seventeen. Still the same time is five to seven. But we're doing a negotiation that the pool just may be not having an event. And then the third thing, um, um, Mike Chusso's assistant, Dan Booney, sent me these two flyers, I'm running out of ink, but they're, these are them running up at the car lot, um, with the people who are working on the partnership with the, getting the power of restoration. So, um, the mayor had mentioned this, but very excited to see this. I mean, the mayor is developing this thing, hours on this project.
Thank you, Mrs. Ames, any other new business?
I'm not sure this is the appropriate time, but I'd like to ask to excuse State Tappan from tonight's meeting.
Looking at my notes, it is the appropriate time. Yes, do I have a second, seconded by Miss Gray to excuse Mr. Tappan from the Sunday meeting? Rule call?
Trutzel, yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries Mr. Tappan as excused, even though Mr. Showman was very rough. Okay, any other new business? Mr. Trutzel?
I just want to remind everybody that a review session next week is at six thirty and the city engineer hopefully will be there. We really recommend it for, perhaps for, um, almost everyone encouraged to be there and, and help the community because it's quite important. There's a lot of good information out there. We'll come out, you know, a hundred thousand dollars we talked about was strictly to a five dollar fee, that's what it was raised. A hundred thousand dollars, but that wasn't, uh, true. Uh, we did, I was saying, the city did sell out. It was making someone a major, uh, for, to, uh, just make page three. So, yeah, I'm not really seeing various questions towards the house.
Absolutely, Tom, and again, we'll also send out a press release, uh, another public notice later in the week. I would say if any other council members have any other issues that they want to discuss, send a review session format, by all means. Get, let me know by the end of the week and I will submit that, include that in the press release as well, so. Are there any new business? Okay, any assignments and meeting dates? I heard of a meeting date for our review session for the streets next Monday evening at six thirty here in council chambers. The committee assignments that, that we sent out since our last legislative meeting was fourteen eighty to the Development Committee a request for legislation to accept the partnership agreement between the city of Chillicothe and Ross County for chip funds. Fourteen eighty-one, the Development Committee a request for legislation to approve, modify, or reject the application for placement of on property in agricultural districts within the city of Chillicothe. Fourteen eighty-two, the Development Committee a request for legislation to appropriate seven thousand dollars, seven thousand and twelve dollars for the city of Chillicothe to participate in local funding of the Ohio Valley Regional Development Commission for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen. Fourteen eighty-three, the Development Committee a request for a steady updating ordinance one one five point oh one to allow residential as permitted use on, other than street level in the historic district. Fourteen eighty-four, to the Utilities Committee a request to study updating ordinance thirty, or three thirty point five in reference to junk cars versus collector cars. Fourteen eighty-five, to the Human Resources Committee a request to incorporate the pay scale for the position of full-time court security into the budget for the municipal court beginning fiscal year two thousand and fifteen. Fourteen eighty-six, to the Community Affairs Committee a request for legislation authorizing Chillicothe Municipal Court to apply for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant purchase Marx radios and metal detectors for, and accepting said grant if awarded. Fourteen eighty-seven, to the Human Resources Committee a request for legislation to appropriate five thousand dollars from unappropriated general fund, the civil service salary and amount of four thousand, and civil service fringes in the amount of thousand. And there's quite, we discussed that quite length here this evening. Fourteen eighty-eight, to the Community Affairs Committee a request for legislation to authorize the Chillicothe Municipal Court to apply for the Victims of Crime Assistance Grant and the State Assistance Act grants to extend the, um, Chillicothe Municipal Court's Victim Witness Assistance Program for a year and accepting said grants if awarded. And that's all we have on the legislation. Mr. Kirk? Item number one.
Second reading of a resolution authorizing the mayor to file an application to the state of Ohio to participate in the small cities' community development block grant allocation program for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, accepting the grant if funded, agreeing to comply with the program requirements, authorizing Michael, Seckoy, and Associates to administer the program, and declaring emergency, second reading.
Mrs. Ames? Second, seconded by Mr. Crowe. Rule call to suspend the rules?
Trutzel, yes. Showman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended, rule call on the resolution.
Trutzel, yes. Showman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is adopted, the resolution is passed. Item two is table, item number three.
Second reading of an ordinance appropriating two hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred dollars from unappropriated parks and recreation capital to fund one year of the Parks and Recreation Department five-year plan and declaring emergency, second reading.
Mr. Bonner?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the three read rule.
Second, seconded by Mr. Crowe. Rule call to suspend the rules?
Trutzel?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries eight to zero, the rules are suspended, rule call on the ordinance.
Trutzel?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Okay, that ordinance is adopted. Item number four.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating five thousand dollars to temporarily fund the Civil Service Secretary position and declaring emergency, first reading.
Ms. Gray?
I'd like to ask the mayor to three read rule.
Rule call to suspend the rules? Got seconded by Mr. Bonner. Rule call to suspend the rules?
Trutzel?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neil?
No.
Gray? Bonner?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries seven to one, the rules are suspended? Rule call on the ordinance.
Trutzel?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
No.
Neil?
No.
Gray?
No.
Bonner?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
It's passing five to three, but emergency language is not effective.
So the ordinance is passed, if we're not going to effect until thirty days, the emergency language is not in effect because of a free descending vote. So that would leave all in thirty days. Item number five.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating five thousand dollars to cover expenses incurred by the Civil Service Commission in regard to the administration of police officer and police sergeant examinations and declaring emergency, first reading.
Where's the treaty?
Second, Mr. Trutzel, seconded, the motion to waive the three read rule.
Trutzel, yes. Showman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Good, that motion carries eight to zero, the rules are suspended, rule call on the ordinance?
Trutzel, yes. Showman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
That motion carries, the ordinance is adopted. Item number six.
First reading of an ordinance accepting and appropriating one thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars in grant funds awarded to the Chillicothe Fire Department as a training reimbursement grant from the Ohio Department of Commerce and declaring emergency, first reading.
At this time, I'd like to request that we please waive the three read rule.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Bonner. Rule call to suspend the rules?
Trutzel?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Ames?
Okay, that motion carries eight to zero, rule call on the ordinance?
Trutzel?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Ames?
Okay, that motion carries, the ordinance is adopted. Item number seven.
First reading of a resolution authorizing the Chillicothe Municipal Court to apply for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant to purchase Marx radios and metal detectors, accepting said grant if awarded, and declaring emergency, first reading.
I'd like to request to waive the three read rule.
Seconded by Mrs. Ames? Rule call on the motion to suspend the rules?
Trutzel?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Ames? Yeah, motion carries, rule call on the resolutions?
Trutzel, yes. Showman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.